Are we good? I'm guessing we are. Oh, special board meeting. It's six oh seven. Pledges of Allegiance will Mr. Guerra.
He tends to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item three A, Templeton Demographics District Attendance Bounding Update with Enrollment Projections. Ms. Macias.
Thank you, President Ganda, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Tonight, we're here to share with you continued studies. We have Mr. Rocky Gardner here with us from Templeton Demographics. He was, he actually was here about a month ago, presented some of his enrollment projections. And what we've been doing has been working together. And right now, what we're going to present are some of the recommendations based on the studies that he's continued to do with us.
It's a pleasure to be back. I'm going to walk through, you know, what we've done is we've done some planning scenarios with the administration, but I want to kind of back up a little bit and kind of where we started before we get going. When I was here last, we presented our enrollment projections and this was part of our demographic study. So this was the first thing that we were engaged to do. And I know that since school has now started here in Socorro, you're our only client that's actually in school right now. I wanted to talk a little bit about where the numbers are right now and because I know people can immediately kind of begin to see concerns or begin to see things. I just wanted to show you real quick. We can't get into too much detail because the numbers are just brand new. We don't know where they're going. But just real quick, we forecasted 2016, 17 to be forty-five, four ninety-nine, growth at two thirty, if you'll recall. Now that, this is a fall snapshot date, so this would be your PEEM snapshot, okay? Currently, so that's understanding, represents the PEEM snapshot, it's October to October, okay, growth. It's attending enrollment. That's important to keep in mind, too, because we're going to talk about reside enrollment with everything else we do tonight. Right now, as of, I think this was today, or last, maybe yesterday, the total was at forty-five, three, seven, eight. So you can see now that that forecast appears to be just a little bit under our forecast and you're still growing. The challenge is, you know, is what's going on and where that growth is happening. First thing I want to mention, because as these numbers come in, you know, you're going to see different things. Right now, the pre-K, the E pre-K in Socorro ISD is about a hundred and eighteen students higher than what we have labeled there. But if you notice, we do not, and this was something I talked about before, Templeton Demographics does not project pre-K enrollment. We don't project pre-K enrollment with any of our clients because it's really subjective to a lot of district changes. So we hold that steady. And with that in mind, Socorro this year, last year went to full day pre-K, which is why you saw that jump. And then this year, you're seeing a jump again. And from what I understand, you can do a, is it undocumented?
Universal.
Yeah, universal pre-K. And as of yesterday, we have a hundred and eighty-eight new pre-K students within our district.
So I pull, so if you kind of back that pre-K out.
Mr. Nakada.
Quick question. Dr. Espinoza, how does that number reconcile with the eight hundred new students enrolled that we were notified last week or I don't remember exactly when?
Yes, what we are, it's actually, that's after day seven yesterday, after day eight today, which was completed a couple of hours ago, we're at forty-five thousand, four hundred, forty-five students. So compared to last year after the eighth day, last year after the eighth day, we're at forty-four, six, five, nine. Forty-four, six, five, nine. This year after the eighth day, we're at forty-five, four, four, five. If somebody can do the math, I think that's about eight hundred students more after the eighth day.
Mr. Gardner.
Straight.
So Mr. Gardner, just because I didn't understand what you just said a minute ago. You're saying your total column is the October snapshot, but I identify your total column as, well, we had total for the year, because we closed out at forty-five, two sixty-nine last year. We didn't, that wasn't at the October snapshot. It continued to grow and so, and he just gave us the number. So, and then you have right next to that total growth, that was total growth for the year, that wasn't at the snapshot, because last year, we only grew by seven hundred students.
This was October of twenty fifteen. These are all October numbers.
What did we close the year at last year, Dr. Espinoza?
Last year, we closed it roughly forty-five thousand, I don't know why, forty-five thousand, three hundreds in my head, around there.
That's why that looked familiar.
Well, yeah, that looks familiar. And that happens, too, because after the...
And I believe, don't quote me, that forty-five thousand, three hundred peaked, I would guess spring semester, January, February, so I may be off, so.
Very often, in a fast-growth district, that peak happens right before Christmas because there's a lot of students that graduate at Christmas time. So that very well could be. But our October number was forty-five, two, six, nine. The new October number is forty-five, four, nine, nine. Right now, you're almost at that number, but like I say, we have to cut, if you pull the pre-K out and we just look at K through twelve, you're still about almost three hundred students under our projection. So you could add another three to five hundred in the next three, four weeks, because you won't level off probably till after Labor Day, you know, when it kind of levels off a little bit. So you could finish above our forecast, possibly by a couple hundred. Our target at Templeton Demographics is to be within one percent. So if we finish, you know, if you finish out, you know, pretty close to forty-five, seven even, we're still, we're only about a half percent. So right now, I feel like our projections are trending pretty well. We won't know until September, you know, really by grade and by campus, what the final results will be, and we will look at it again at that time. But right now, I'm feeling pretty good about, I did some math today and looking at the number that, not the day seven number, but the day six number that I had earlier today. And it was, if you, the K through twelve was forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-five. And our K through twelve projection, which backs this out, is forty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine. So that's about two hundred and eighty students still below our projection that you will likely make up, and you might go past that. I mean, I fully expect that our projections are, you know, we prefer to be under where you end up.
Well, Mr. Gardner, when you say one percent, one percent of our total enrollment, which is a huge standard deviation, or one percent of your projection?
One percent of your, yes, so if you look at, one percent of your enrollment is like four hundred students, right? So we try to be within four hundred students at our projection. Four, four hundred and fifty-five, whatever, yeah, right, right, right close to that. So I just want, I wanted to talk a little bit about that before we move on and I can make things even more complicated. Because as we talked, last time we met, when Templeton Demographics worked with BLK to do the facility study and work through that stuff, if you recall, we began then to work with reside enrollment. We had to work with where the students are living right now. So the student file that we used has a different timestamp than the attend, you know, than the PEEMs. So that's why there is a little bit of movement in some of those numbers. But the bottom line is, I want to be very clear, as we start this first, we go through this first feeder pattern, the reside enrollment is where students are living right now. All right, so I'm going to move, I'm going to move forward. We're going to, we're going to look at this information by feeder pattern. And again, we worked with the administrative team, they came up with, you know, boundaries that they would send me a note, or I even met with them at one point, that said, what's going to happen if we move this and move this? And I plugged that, those numbers in. So what I'm going to show you, and this is, for each feeder, I've got an elementary, a middle, and a high school, okay? So if it's, the numbers are in red, they're elementary, if they're in green, they're middle, and if they're in blue, they're high school. So for the Americas feeder pattern, these are the recommended changes, or the changes that could, that could be implemented to relieve or change this feeder pattern. Vista del Sol, we're talking about moving Gateway Estates out of Drogen. There's ninety students there as of last year, but they're, but they could add about six hundred students over the next ten years. There's almost a thousand homes going to be built. We moved this area right here, there's zero students there, and it's a commercial industrial area. That was more cosmetic than anything else. That, that's a move to relieve Drogen. Another elementary move would be to move the students right here in Mesquite Trails. There's two hundred students there now, and they'll continue to be about another hundred students when that's complete. Moved over Sierra Vista. We're also moving the West Texas Estates from Drogen into Loma Verde. And then we've moved a section of Sierra Vista, out of Sierra Vista and into Cooper. That's a hundred and twenty-five students. So that gives you an idea of an elementary change to that feeder pattern. And really, it's a lot of movement to relieve Drogen is what we're trying to do there.
Mr. Gardner.
Mr. Nakada. Another question, sir. So that movement of those students necessitates the crossing of Job Battle. I assume we would have to bus all those students. So how many buses are we going to have to add?
Correct. And that's two hundred students, that would be three buses. And again, that was if all of the students would actually ride a bus to go. Most of our buses are about seventy-four, and this is only for elementary. So for the John Drogen area, it would be about three buses if every single child needed transportation over to Sierra Vista.
Well, and I guess the statement means that if every student needed transportation, we're assuming some parents would drive their kids, because simply crossing Job Battle qualifies them for transportation, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And it would be the same for the one hundred and twenty-five, those students there in that one hundred and twenty-five area going to Cooper. Most of the students are already bused currently to Sierra Vista because of the two miles. So therefore, that's where Mr. Mesa will do his magic and share with me how many buses we would need if that were the case, because in that case, it would be Saragossa, as far as the large road that they would be passing to get them to Cooper.
That's right, okay. But the Drogen students right now are not bused, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's, that's the elementary change for this feeder. But from a middle school perspective, the green outline is the current middle school boundaries, and the yellow would be the change to Drogen. So what we've done is, we've taken a section of Loma Verde that's currently in the, the Eastlake. Eastlake. I'm getting them all down. It's currently feeding Eastlake, we're going to move it into the Drogen zone and then let it feed on into Americas. And we're relieving Drogen of a hundred and twenty-three students on that far side over there, that will then be moved into the Clark zone. And then we also have the area to the north that will move to Clark. So that, again, that's a shift in the Drogen zone, relieving Drogen some more and bringing some of the, just making Loma Verde a clean feeder. So that elementary school, that, all of the elementary school feeds that same feeder. And the high school looks very, just like the middle school. We picked up Loma Verde all the way through and those areas there. So this is the Americas feeder. And here are the numbers, and you can see what we've done here. We've written, the before is the work that we did with BLK, so that was with the facility study there. So you can see what we've done here is we've relieved Drogen considerably. You can see that it stays pretty much below capacity, gets a little bit above functional capacity out eight to ten years. And, but we do have a little bit of a problem at Vista del Sol, but it's really pretty tight. It's all above functional capacity, you know, and that's, that's in that seven to ten-year timeframe, and that's where things get fuzzier anyway, you know, when you're doing projections. That is, and that, so now I've kind of walked you through a sample of how I'm going to do each feeder to give you an idea of how that would work. And really, nothing I want to mention before we go too far is, we're doing this right now with data that's ten months old, ten, eleven months old, because we're working with, and so, and we're trying to build a plan that would start in two years and then forecast it out, you know, that, another nine years. So there's a lot of moving pieces there. Once we come to some plans that we like, we feel like we've developed very good trends with this. Early in September, we'll get a new student file and things are leveled off, we'll remap the students, see if there's been any shift in trends, and then we can kind of tweak these numbers if we need to, to see if there's been anything that's moved around.
Mr. Gardner. Straight.
So when I read this, these documents, I misunderstood it. What I understood the before was kind of what our projection had been before our enrollment, where we're thinking, and after, after you did your study. That's incorrect. The before is the BLK study, the after is what then?
That's the results of those numbers I just showed you. It's basically pulling out a hundred and twenty-three at one school, putting them in a, it's the movement that we showed on these three slides applied to that chart.
So one of the questions I asked Ms. Macias earlier, so what's the reliability on these numbers? Because quite frankly, I mean, at this point for this year, we're going to be off by quite a bit. And when you project this out ten years out, you know, and there'll be considerations on building schools and so forth, how reliable are these numbers?
Well, I feel like they're very strong. Their reside numbers, I mean, they're only as strong as the data we collect. We've done the best research that we could do. We're following the trends of the housing. In a ten-year period, there's likely to be a recession, there's likely an up and down with the economy. We can't predict when that's going to happen, when the housing market's going to go down, when some neighbors are going to regenerate and some aren't. But what we, so it's based on the most reliable data we have today. And in two months, when we get new data, some of it could change, because we don't, you know, some of these trends could change in just a year.
Well, I understand that, and I don't mean to be difficult, but one of our requests to administration is some kind of a reliable projection to avoid the same problems that Selen and Paso has had. We build schools, we build schools because there's kids there, and later they're half empty. So we do need some kind of a predictive model. And obviously, we're going to work with this, I need to be very honest here. I'm a little concerned that you were projecting two hundred student growth, but you're willing to accept a one percent change, four hundred students. That means your projection could be off by two hundred percent. And when we carry it out seven, eight years, that's a lot.
Two hundred percent.
Well, four hundred opposed to two hundred students.
I'm sorry?
You were projecting a growth of two hundred students. We, you're saying that you would accept a growth of four hundred students, four hundred and fifty, one percent. That means you're willing to accept a two hundred percent difference from your projection.
Right.
Based on enrollment. So see, this is, this is kind of hard to reconcile, as we're trying to project this further out and leave this district, you know, when we all leave in good shape.
I understand. You know, I don't know, when I looked at the difference of one percent, that four hundred students over forty-seven campuses, that would be seven to ten students per campus off. That's really a, you know, a very, from our perspective, from the work that we do with the clients, that is a place we're coming to. I mean, it won't be ten at every campus, it could be, it could become fifty at one and five at another. But our method, I'm just, I'm confident in our methodology. I don't know there's, I'm sure if I can assure you in any other way.
So when you went from year to year, did you use rollover data or did you tie that with our geocoding to see what students, because see, I see, for example, going across the line there, one year, six thirty-six, six thirty-seven, six forty-three, six forty-eight, and so forth, those are the numbers for Cooper. You know, how do we get that? Because you're accounting for a couple of students each time. Is that, was that tied to the geocoding based on their age groups or are you just using rollover data?
No, we started the great, we do our projections at the base level. So when we start projections, we start at each elementary attendance zone, we have their grade history, so we have their PEEM snapshot history. So again, it's in attend mode, we keep five years of history, and when we know what their cohorts have been by grade level, for every grade level. And so then we, we look at that cohort history, and if it's in a zone that's pretty much built out, then we've used our geoco to understand what the regeneration rates are, just to see what the yields are in those houses. And then we, we actually put in a different cohort for every grade, based on professional judgment. It's kind of an art science, there's obviously some art involved. And then we do it by campus, and then once we've, we do every elementary campus, and then we go to the middle school campus. And we do it by campus and grade. And also, within that elementary attendance zone, we count that, we look at the single-family homes and their yield, the multifamily homes and their yield, and then we look at the projected housing that could be coming. And we project a yield for those, and then we make sure our forecast trends to match that yield.
Sorry, go ahead, please. Mr. Mandales.
Yeah, at the beginning, you had a graph where you had three zeros around Park and Drogen and, yeah, that one. Now, does that zero means that you are basing this in the fact that we are going to have no growth?
Those, what I'm showing there, those are, we put numbers in areas that were being moved. So we're moving, this section that's being moved right here has zero students right now, and it's a commercial and industrial area, so it's never going to have students. And this area down here that we moved is a very similar, that was done for cosmetic. So when you see a zero, there typically means there's no students there. And unless we put a note, that we don't anticipate students being. In this particular case, there were no students there in, you know, last year, but with Gateway Estates, they're going to build homes, and we are forecasting students to be coming.
Thank you for the explanation, but I guess the question that I have on the back of my mind is that in the Mangwood area and Cooper and stuff like that, the growth may be close to zero or whatever. What happens if we go the other way and we go negative?
What, I'm sorry.
And just to, that is included in the projections as he's forecasted, because we do have areas that actually are declining, just like I shared with you before. These zeros actually mean that there are currently zero students living in that area. And unless there was, for example, here in the Gateway Estates, there's going to be growth there, we know for a fact. And the others, they're industrial areas, so we don't foresee any students moving in. However, the negative part is already adjusted within, within his projections on that sheet. I don't know if that helps.
Well, I was talking specifically about Benito and those schools of Mangwood area that may be declining and may be going in a very negative way.
Yeah, yeah, and through our ten-year projections, we do see those swings, because we have a grade level, and if you have a really small kindergarten and first grade, and that's what's moving into the school, then you can see a decline. But they're also going to see some regeneration over time, too. So we make, we make room for that regeneration as well. And I also think that there's a lot, there's students that are living there that aren't attending Socorro ISD, too. And we kind of expect with some of the growth and some of the change, that some of those can come back, and that's going to help you with regeneration. Thank you.
Mr. Gardner.
Thank you.
Question?
Ms. Macias, in looking at, can we go back to that, that map that we were just at?
The elementary.
Yes, that, yeah, that one right there. And, and pardon the, again, you know how my brain has been functioning for the past few months? It's not any better. However, here's my question. Right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at the different shaded areas in the specific colors. For example, Vista del Sol, the projection would be, the area in purple would all go to Vista del Sol? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the area in light pink would be for Drogen. Yes? Where are the houses going to go up? In other words, that little part right there, is that the, because I know a lot of the bigger pink area, that's Job Concrete, and that's, that's the, that's that part over there, but where are all the Drogen students going to come from?
Perfect. And Drogen is a K eight, so if you could switch to the next slide. If you notice, what we did is we shifted students for elementary, that way we could leave additional support there or space. So therefore, if you look at Drogen, this is the elementary, since it's a K eight, now that growth, which is below Pelicano, is now included in the numbers of Drogen to include those thirty-nine, which currently they go to Loma Verde, but then for middle school, they go to Enzer and then Eastlake. So what we've done is now they are now officially in the Americas feeder pattern. That way, we could also support that feeder pattern.
Okay, so going back to the elementary part.
Yes, ma'am.
And again, I just want to make sure I understand. So for the, yeah, because I'm trying to point with my, with my glove. Yeah, I guess you guys can't see what I'm pointing at, right? So this area right here, and this would be the elementary part. And then the next slide would show all the middle school part that's going to Drogen. So approximately, how many elementary students are we going to have at Drogen from this area? Do we know? Give or take?
I do not have that right. Do we have the individual campuses? I don't know that we have that right now.
Mr. Nakada.
I can look, I can try to look at that.
Further to Ms. Rodriguez's question, now I'm confused. So, so we're saying that students in elementary are going to start at Drogen, and then when they hit sixth grade, those classes are going to split, and some of them are going to go to Sierra, to Clark?
Actually, they're going to start.
They're going to start at Sierra Vista, and then they'll come to Drogen for middle school, which is that little area in the top where it says plus or minus two hundred, because what we have to do is we have to relieve, we have to relieve John Drogen. Now, another thing that we could do, again, this is, we're still in the research part of it, is that we could then shift an area over for elementary and middle school, and therefore, it would be less of an area for just the elementary.
I think that would make sense, because I mean, I would just think that if I started at Sierra Vista and Clark is right next door, that I would continue going to Clark. Otherwise, what it sounds like to me is, again, we'll be in one of those situations where, as a parent, I'm taking my elementary kid to Sierra Vista, and even though Clark is right next door, I've got to drive all the way across Job Battle to get my middle schooler to Drogen when Clark is right there.
And we, what we do is we always provide that flexibility for parents, so for our in-district transfers, they would qualify under sibling, because we have had boundary changes before that that would occur. So we wanted to make sure, we always want to give our parents that support to keep their family together. But that's something that, whenever I presented this to our feeder pattern principals before today's meeting, they actually gave me that feedback. And we might possibly be looking at that darker shade where it's plus or minus two hundred, instead of just the elementary going, it might be elementary and middle. That's something that we're going to look at the numbers. That was feedback we received from them. Thank you.
Mrs. Nakada.
Ms. Macias.
Yes.
As Drogen's boundaries are right now, is it just that area where there's new houses are where it says the negative two hundred?
You want my glove?
Michael's doing it for me. Is that, is that their boundary as of right now?
It's actually, please go ahead.
I should, I should have pointed this out. The red line is the current boundary of the elementary. So there is growth now that is going to occur here, about six hundred homes, and there's homes here that are going to be built, and then there's some.
So, yeah, so the current boundary is the zero area, the plus or minus two hundred, where it says Drogen, and the plus or minus ten. That's the current John Drogen feeder pattern for elementary.
And middle school?
And for middle school, it is, I believe, very much the same.
You see the green now line? So you do have, you know, pardon, you see where this? This, you see where Drogen, you just do this, and now it's going to go down to this. So this group of students is about a hundred and twenty-three students alive on here. All of them are going to Drogen.
And what we're doing there is that the Loma Verde students will now go to Clark and then to John Drogen, because keeping it the same, we would need another John Drogen in the area. Based on the numbers, we're already at capacity.
Okay, Ms. Macias, for, are we at capacity at Drogen for elementary and middle school?
Yes, ma'am. Both? And he actually, actually, Mr. Garcia got very creative this year, and he converted three different classrooms into classrooms. And what he did there is so that we could ensure that he kept his third, fourth, and I believe, second grade students there, because we were overflowing them to Sierra Vista.
Mr. Nakada.
Do we, um... Do we, um, so two questions. Number one, I, I assume this isn't the first time that we've had a study like this done. So have we looked at the previous study to look at how our numbers, what the reality came out to be? I mean, because, you know, this one goes to twenty twenty-six, and I assume at some time there's an overlap from the last study we had to our current numbers. So, you know, we could see, just maybe for a level of comfort there, if the prediction became reality or not. And I don't know if we had the same folks do it, um, just, just curious. And then secondly, do, you said something interesting, regeneration. I, too, am concerned, as Mr. Ayub has been, with, you know, building schools that then, over a period, will sit half-empty. Do you have any idea, um, either of pattern or of possible, um, available space within a specific area? Just what the life of a school is? I mean, at what point, because we see, um, and we can all point to examples in, in the districts that are around us, where the enrollment, regeneration doesn't occur anymore. You know, neighborhoods mature and, um, kids don't go there anymore. Or, or, you know, the families that are there, they're, they're now grandparents and, and grandchildren come visit. They don't live there, and so populations of, of school-aged children start to decrease. Is, do you all have any idea, having done this more than once, I'm sure, have any insight into what the typical, you know, a- at what point, going out ten years here? I mean, some of our oldest schools, or even our, not even oldest, I would say more, schools in our more mature area, like I'm sure there's, there's some areas out in Montwood we can point to where there's no more available.
Yeah.
Yeah, no more land available to build. So at what point will that population start decreasing? Any idea? Or is that a factor considered here?
This would be somewhat, somewhat of a guess. We, we do, we have studied yields in neighborhoods by, by age of household and price point of household. And that, that's where you have to start blending that, because there's, there's certain price points, and there's, of homes that will continually generate. They'll continually yield a very similar, you know, it used to be, the price, prices have gone up now. So things have changed a little bit. What we used to see is in a higher-end home, say a home three, three hundred thousand would end up, they, they would be more of a, you know, they, they're like a second home. So when people move to those, a lot of times they already had secondary students. Now, this was seven years ago before the housing crash, when money got real easy to, to get loans for. Then we started seeing elementary students in those, those homes. But those homes, we did see regenerate much slower, because once they got in, they stayed in. Their kids left, and they stayed because they, they were in there, their final. Then you get these homes that are in this, you know, eighty thousand to, say, two hundred thousand range. Those are really family households, and they tend to regenerate pretty strong, you know? And, and so a lot of the areas that, you know, we didn't, we, now, I can't point to a, a price point study that we, we did as part, part of this. But the areas that we looked at, like in Montwood and stuff like that, seem to have really strong, you know, attend levels, I mean reside levels at, at elementary and secondary. We feel like if that regeneration's gonna come, we've seen a kindergarten decline statewide. We talked about that the last time we were here, and it dropped off in Socorro. Those, those students are gonna come back, and I think they're in the district. And that's, when you see the, the pre-K jump the way it has the la- last, last couple of years, that tells me that there's, there's young students in the district, and they're gonna come back. And I think that regeneration's gonna happen, or, and, and that's what's gonna sustain these schools. I don't think, I can't think of an elementary school, I'd have to look at everything, that I really believe is gonna phase, that would actually drop off dramatically. But I think what's, what we are doing in Montwood is we're bringing some stu-, when we get to, to that feeder pattern, you'll see where we're bringing some students in there, that I think is gonna keep those, keep that area regenerating as well.
Any more questions?
All right, we're gonna move on to Eastlake. Eastlake, well, it might not take as long, I'm not sure. Eastlake, we, we, we didn't actually make any changes to the current elementary boundaries. The middle school boundaries, the changes, you know, are, are what we, we're just discussing. We, we moved the Loma Verde, you know, the Loma Verde area, Loma Verde area, into, back into the, uh, the Americas feeder pattern. So that, so that was really the only change to the Eastlake, the Eastlake feeder. So they'll, you know, their, their middle and, and the high school will see a little bit of a drop, and they'll see a little bit le- less growth. So when you look at this chart, it does, that doesn't look a lot different. You can see that these numbers really are pretty much the same. Only place that you can't really see it, because there, there's no color. But your, your high school gets larger, you can see that it peaks out. Well, I'm sorry, your, your hot, your, Eastlake High School gets smaller. And, and, and Enzer drops off as well, you can see that. Maybe, you know, this year's seventh, tenth, is that, that'll turn yellow, tell that, that ninth year. That's just the students that we backed out, and we moved in, into the Americas feeder pattern. So, other than that, that was really just a, uh, you know, we pulled Loma Verde out. And what, what you will see is, when we did the study with BLK, this, I almost forgot, but you're probably gonna remind me. When we did the, the study with BLK, the discussion was move, moving that section of Loma Verde that extended into the Eastlake feeder, let that Loma Verde boundary stop there. Leave it in Eastlake and use that as part of it, it's gonna be open, new school, that's the cost. The new plan, we leave Loma Verde entirely in the Americas. So what you, what you'll see is, this, Loma Verde number thirty, if you thought it might be needed, took out five years. That number's, that's gonna be smaller. So it could be five times, if there isn't capacity here, for where you might, if we need that third, uh, third recommended option. It might not be needed, or, you know, that's six to seven with, with this. We move, move, now, now we're in the Montwood feeder. Now, this one, um, there's a lot of words up there, and so I'm.
Mr. Nahara?
Oh, sorry.
I apologize.
I'm sorry, sir, if you'll go back to the Eastlake feeder pattern, please. I'm not seeing on, on the maps that we have for the Eastlake feeder pattern, what part of Loma Verde is being moved. Now, I can go back to the Americas and see it, but does that accommodate for four hundred students? Just moving Loma Verde? Because that's what the numbers are saying.
Well, there, well, there's growth as well.
I'm sorry?
There, there's growth being moved as well. So we, we moved this Loma Verde. The, the forty-one students there, and we've moved thirty-nine students. And, and so we, we've moved those hundred students and. Some ridge. That's like seventy, that's about eight, an eight, eighty student swing at. So, so you, you'll see that, um, the growth, you can see here that we moved thirty-nine students. So nine forty-four to nine oh three. You can see that this number stays the same, but, but there is also growth that was going in up, up here as well. We were having, the new housing that's in that area is also growing. So, so this was growing thirteen point, now it's twelve sixty-three. If we move those thirty-nine students out here, but we're also moving the growth that was going in that area. It's the same for high schools. This, this high school's number, you can see here, is twenty-two to sixty-eight, that, that's thirty-six. So that's, part, part of that forty is the students that are there now. And the other part, it was growth, it's a purple, four hundred new houses.
And Ms. Nahara?
Now, how do you, if this goes, the first year is three, three high school students, the next year it's six. The next year it could be, because the growth is going in there, overall, now we're just guessing.
And Ms. Nahara, that current area is currently going to Loma Verde for elementary. So truly, our recommendation is that they stay in the Americas feeder pattern instead of going Loma Verde and then Enzer and going to another. So now they'll go Loma Verde, and then they'll go John Drugan, because they're on this side of three seventy-five, and then they'll go Americas. So they'll stay in the Americas feeder pattern.
And, and I mean, I know in the last couple of years, Enzer has been bursting at the seams. I mean, and we don't have room for any more portables there. And I was just asking if the moves that we're proposing are enough of a relief?
Enough? Because that was one of the biggest reasons we wanted to keep them in the Americas feeder pattern, is to help. If you notice, if you go to Eastlake and you look at Desert Wind and you look at Enzer, we are over the, the actual functional capacity. However, one thing that I learned is that truly, whenever you're building a middle school, right now, we're only about four hundred and fifty students, even with this in ten years. So therefore, that's not enough for a middle school.
Mr. Mandalas?
Thank you.
Mr. Ayub?
Now that we have this slide up, and before we move over, uh, because I just noticed something on there. For example, um, Mission Ridge and, and Desert Wind area, you know, why, why would, well, let's say Desert Wind, why would a thousand eighty-five students live in that area and only eight hundred attend school? Or are they attending elsewhere? But nowhere else do we have a, a jump in numbers where they would be moved. And how do we know they live there and don't come to school? Because that's, uh, almost a three hundred difference. And, and I would imagine that area, I don't know if they're going to Parotu schools or what, but they're not a charter school. So why would we have such a drop there from the kids that live there that don't come to school?
Oh, the reside number that?
Yes.
That's in there?
Reside versus attend.
Oh, good, 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 yes.
Yes, uh, this is something that we looked at also. For example, for Mission Ridge, reside eight hundred and eight, it does not include their elementary. Right now, they have about six hun- uh, sixty-five elementary, so we're at about a hundred. So therefore, truly, we're looking at about thirty kids, possibly because of parents, grandparents, that transition. So that, that thirty number is what we look at at the elementary, where it's pretty feasible. Right now, for Desert Wind, this is the second year of a boundary change that we did two years ago. So technically, the students that were previously zoned to Enzer are now transitioning over to Desert Wind. So therefore, the information that was used by Templeton Demographics was that boundary. So technically, we still have a, one more year of a hundred and twenty-five students shifting over. So therefore, the reside and attend will get closer after next year's numbers.
So that, um, I guess the difference between that thousand sixty-five and eight ninety-four at Enzer, are students that used, that live in Desert Wind going to Enzer?
Correct, and then the opposite happens whenever we look at Desert Wind.
Perfect, thank you.
Gonna move on to, to, to Montwood now? So Montwood, we've made adjustments in, in Montwood at several elementary schools. Again, we're trying to, to relieve. What this really does is it provides some strong, uh, relief to, to Luann Chavez. Keep in mind, Luann Chavez has about, almost two thousand students that reside within that, in, in that school. So we've, we've taken this, this lower section of Luann Chavez and moved it into Ball. Now, while doing that, this Ball extended to the east of three seventy-five. We've relieved some of Ball right here, and then this, about these students that are up here, and we've moved them to Alfida Chavez. And so that, that's what creates the ru- room at Ball for this relief here. And then we've also, you'll see on the next slide, is all of Ball will, will now be moved into the Montwood feeder. So we're also, we're, we're not only relieving Luann Chavez, but we're also relieving Sun Ridge at the same time. That's a move there. Then, then we, we've used Martinez, and we've taken it north into the Cybert zone, and picked up two hundred and thirty-seven students, which allowed Cybert to move into Hambridge and pick up some students there. But we're, we're gonna show that number on a different feeder map, because our, our proposal here proposes moving Cybert into the El Dorado feeder. So that, these are moves, so again, at the elementary level, in the Montwood feeder, it's Alfida Chavez relieving Ball, then Ball relieving Lu- Luann Chavez, and Martinez with Cybert. And if I go to the middle school plan, this is where, where you see that we've, we've, with this relief that we're doing here, we've, uh, we've taken the students that are gonna go to Alfida Chavez and left them in the Montwood middle school feeder. These students here, they're currently attending Ball already. We're just gonna move them out of Sun Ridge and into the Slider feeder, and th- these students here would also be in the Slider. And then you can see that with this boundary change, Cybert used to drop all the way down here for its middle school portion. We've picked up the portion that, so Martinez is completely within this zone here, all, all feeding Montwood. I'll give you a second to take that in.
Mr. Nahara?
Sure.
Eastlake again?
Oh, good.
Right there.
Hey, we're processing a little slow here.
Yeah, so it's my understanding that, or our understanding, that, that Enzer is at capacity. But if I look at maximum capacity of thirteen fifty-one, functional capacity of eleven eighty-two, and attend at ten sixty-five, it looks like we're at about seventy-five percent for maximum capacity. So that just doesn't reconcile to me. How can we be, you know, split, yeah, busting at the seams when we've got room for another three hundred students?
I, I think that, what I recall, we, Clinton, you might have to help me out, out here. But this thirteen fifty-one, eleven eighty-two was with an addition. Did that change the capacity?
So the functional capacities are based on the, the teaching stations they have today.
I apologize, can you please?
Thank you.
It's coming, it's coming right behind you.
All right. So the functional capacities are based on the teaching stations today. But some of the, the caveats are, if they have more special needs students than normal, they lose a classroom because they have to house six students in that room. So the, the capacity starts to dropping. So if, if they have, or they start adding other curricular things, like a, a piano instructional class or any other, you know, advanced science class, anything like that, they start to lose being able to put twenty-five students in that room and put six. So i- it's, campus to campus has to be very carefully considered in looking at how they're housing students year to year. But the overall capacity, if they were to use every space for the total number of students they could house in that space, that would be the maximum capacity, functional backed down a little more.
So what I hear you saying is that we really have more capacity if we just force the leadership at Enzer to utilize the building more efficiently? Is that what you're saying?
That is, that's one interpretation.
Well, this, did we, what formula did we use? I mean, there's a square footage, you know, that's a lot of per student. Is that what we're using for maximum? Are we including the portables? See, I think that's what we're confused, between maximum capacity and functional capacity. And I think, in theory, we understand that, but what numbers are you using to come up with that, that amount of students?
So maximum capacity is counting all of the teaching stations and then the square footage of those spaces, and determining how many students TEA would recommend in that space.
That's max.
That's maximum. Not including portables.
If we have portable there, how many portable?
There's additional capacity, correct. The functional is accounting for schedule. So you'll see the elementaries, usually the, the two are closer together. Where high schools, it starts to fall further apart, because there, there's, the teachers now have their training sessions, their teacher conference sessions, so those classrooms aren't used during that period as an actual classroom.
For special needs.
Right.
It's expected to be best, so.
Correct.
Do you know what you mean?
Correct.
That factors in there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then back to Montwood. For Cybert, now, in almost every study that has been presented to us, and just based on our observations year to year, Montwood is a fairly mature area. So why would we move Cybert to El Dorado where there's continued growth? And I believe the population there, enrollment is, 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 has been increasing year over year over year. The open land that would fall into the El Dorado and therefore new building, you know, there's still areas there, so opportunity for growth. Is it really wise to move Cybert when I would expect that in five years, we're gonna be moving them back? So, you know, that, right, help me understand why, why that's a, a good idea. To me, it seems like we would, oh, this is elementary.
Cybert's K eight.
Oh, okay, that's right. Okay, see what happens when I start to second guess myself? So I, I, that just, I mean, it doesn't, um, how does that make sense, I guess, is the question?
Correct, and now El Dorado is actually landlocked. The growth that will happen in El Dorado will be in the Purple Heart area. But truly, all the growth that you're discussing is happening at Hebbel Hills now. So therefore, by doing this, this allows us, and if you look at the, the projections initially from Templeton. from Templeton demographic, which is the before, over, going to El Dorado.
You want me to skip over?
Yeah, and then we'll come back. In ten years, we're looking at El Dorado going to a thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven. Because again, now they are, they are landlocked. So therefore, with this projection, again, we're needing, based on the information, we're needing support in middle school, in El Dorado feeder pattern. So by bringing Bill Cybert, it allows Hambrick to, they balance out, and then we're able to help Hambrick, or sorry, Hernando. So now we have room for those middle school students in the El Dorado feeder pattern where we needed support. And what that does, and you'll, if you could skip to the Pebble Hills before, if you look at the Pebble Hills before, because you're exactly right, all of that growth is happening in that area. Pebble Hills, thank you, would actually, in year twenty twenty-three, we would be at eight thousand twenty-six. So based on what we were trying to do is we're trying to ensure that all of our, all of our high schools are comparable, that we're maximizing the use of all of them. Same thing from elementary, as you've seen, and for middle schools. So in the El Dorado area, we need assistance in middle school coming up in a couple of years. So therefore, by doing this, that'll help us accommodate. However, Montwood, we know that we need to make sure that we support. Therefore, that's where you saw that area that went to Helen Ball. And they actually currently go to Helen Ball, but then they come right back to Pebble Hills, which is one of the fastest growing areas. So what we're going to do is from Helen Ball and Alfida, we're going to keep them in the Montwood feeder pattern. That way, they could continue to support Montwood. And that's one thing that we're still looking at, and right here in this area, we might be looking at less students going to Benito based on the information, and again, getting feedback from the principals. And that way, that continues to support. And again, that, those are, again, this is in the study stage. So as we get feedback from you all, from community, from teachers, we're going to continue to develop that plan. That way, when I present it in November, so please continue to give me feedback. It'll be a, a solid plan.
So Ms. Macias, when you say feedback from the principals, what kind of feedback are we getting from the principals? Because I, you know, I think the numbers are stronger than any anecdotal information. So what are we getting from the principals when you say feedback from the principals?
Feedback is, I give them all the information and I am sharing with them, will this work? And many of them are relieved because many of them, again, we had shared before, they were, they're worried every single year when they go to staffing. And the worry comes whenever you lose staff. When you gain staff, they're excited. That, when, whenever we've talked about possibility, like for example, Benito gaining, man, that's not a problem. It's whenever, every single year, they go to staffing and they say, you know, possibly one or two less teachers or less classrooms, that's when the heartache comes. So at this point, we haven't received as far as concerns on that. The one thing that I do receive feedback on is, okay, let's make sure, let's look, because they know the lay of the land and they said, well, maybe this area, just like I shared with you, maybe a little bit less to Benito, and then they shared with me the land portion of it. So what Mr. Juan Hyman and I do is we go and we drive every single area to make sure that it makes, makes sense being there and driving it. That way, it's not just a map that we're doing, oh, okay, let's draw, no, we're actually out there and looking. Okay, does that physically make sense?
Okay, so I assume that this presentation incorporates some of the feedback that we provided from the last discussion. Do you all maintain a history? Because, you know, I, I wouldn't put it past myself where, you know, I asked for one thing last time just because that's the observation, and then all of a sudden, I'm asking for the exact opposite this time around. So do you, do you all, like, keep a running history so that, you know, if, if we discuss something, you know, and then we come to the conclusion, yeah, okay, that makes sense, when the question comes up again, you know, with all these changes, we don't undo what, what we've already done to begin with?
Correct, every single change that we make, we have, we have a file that shows all the prior changes. Even whenever there's recommendations, we save, and then it's draft ten, twenty, thirty. Yes, we do. Because again, last time, variables were very different. Last time, we were looking at not building any schools at all. So therefore, we were just looking at balancing with the existing structures we had. Based on the information that we've received from the study, we see that there's a possibility of needing some structures, but we still want to make sure we maximize. So therefore, the, the boundary adjustments that we might be recommending in November.
Is there some place, each one of these is, you know, carved out? We see the presentation by feeder pattern. Do we have this, and probably not in print, because it'd probably have to be the size of that screen there, where we can see it like all together to understand? Because, you know, the first thing I want to do right now is go to Google Maps and see, are there any open areas in, in El Dorado? Because I, I can remember driving, they're probably commercial. I'm just not thinking about it as I'm driving by them. But, you know, when I'm driving through the area, I do remember some, some open areas that are there. But, you know, without looking at it, I really can't, maybe it is zoned for commercial and apartment buildings are going to go up or something like that, you know, I mean.
If we can talk about El Dorado, I can think, do you want me to go there now, or do you want to finish Montwood?
I have my own questions.
Just, just real quick, though, we can make a map. Templeton demographics can produce a map that shows this plan. We, we, we can do it as a PDF that could be sixty by fifty. If you have it electronically, you can zoom in and out. You know, that way, if you want to print it, you can always print it, but it could be something you have on your iPad or if you're out driver, or something, we could try to do that. Put it down on my notes here and get that, that free guide so you can kind of give an idea of where it's at.
And one thing that Mr. Juan Hyman is going to do is just like the last time you all asked for something to where you can do it electronically and go to the map, and that way, you can actually see the streets and exactly how it, how it draws. He said that he would have it to you by writing, and that way, just the last time he said you can click on it and then all of these recommended, and again, right now, they're not recommended, just the study target. Would be there if you all to look at, please give me any.
That's even better.
Mr. Ayub.
So this feeder pattern in Americas, when I read it, was the most challenging. We have a lot of problems, and, and one of the things I, I think we're hoping to avoid, or at least I'm hoping to avoid, is when you look at the feeder patterns now, look at how narrow they are, and then they, they stretch out to the side, and that has to do with the placements of the schools. You know, we still have open land that we're going to put schools, and we need to try to minimize that because we're into having to bus students. And look at where Cybert is, it's, it's on the edge of its district of the students that it serves, and only because of the student population. And, and I really think that with, with everybody involved, we can be wiser as we try to finish out the, the construction in the building. But there's some problems that, or concerns that I had here. Because this district is landlocked and because we're pulling Cybert out at some point, you know, El Dorado could get some relief by taking a few students more from Pebble Hills. They're going to go to three thousand. Mountwood is just going to drop down to five A. And so, I mean, I'm okay with that if that's what we want to do, and, and, and they drop to five A. Eastlake will be five A for a while, they'll eventually move up. But if we're trying to provide relief to our leading edge where all the, the growth is, maybe we needed to, to look at some of these things. The other problem in this area is that we have a bunch of middle schools that are very low attendance, and, and not too, too low, but we've got less attendance here. And then on the other end, we've got middle school with a lot of attendance. And if there's a way to bolster this, you know, and I look at like, for example, at O'Shea, and, and O'Shea has, let me see, I have it here, Kelleher. They have five hundred and seven students that live in the area, but they're attending eight hundred and fifty-one. And the reason they have that increase of three hundred and fifty students is because they're probably our overflow campus. And so we're, we're having to bus students in. And if we're having to do that, we have to do that. But could we not extend their boundary and bus them from closer rather than bus them all the way down from, from, you know, James Butler or somewhere else by extending these boundaries at this point? This district has these concerns in there because of, of the landline. I still think either Cybert or Hambrick at some point needs to be a part of the equation with, with Mountwood. But we really don't have enough in that area for two middle schools and two K eights. There's not enough middle school students. And, and that, the problem, that, I'm sorry, the danger with that is that it limits our capacity, our ability to provide services to the middle school kids because there's not enough volume of them there. And so, can we do something more with this?
Let me share with you some of the thinking is that right in, currently, right in this area here, there is just projected growth. So by doing this, what it allows us to do is actually this projected growth, initially, we had this entire area for Montwood. So by doing this, I know that in the future, this projected growth will go right in here because you are exactly right, I have room in middle school here for these students. This middle school area, I need it for El Dorado, or I believe I do. So here, I feel very comfortable that the growth that comes will continue to help us for the Montwood area. And we'll already have, this area is right by the target, which is on Montwood. So it's that natural feed to Helen Ball, and it's actually closer. And then it, it would go to Slider and then go up. This area here, that's something that we're looking again, right now in research. Technically, this area here, if this is something we plan out for the future, this area here would then go Alfida, Montwood, and it would solidify our numbers there. And now we have our Montwood Middle School and Slider Middle School being utilized, just like you shared.
What would happen if either Cybert or Hambrick, one would become an elementary school and one would become a middle school? That would allow the population of more middle school students at one school, same volume, but, you know, together of elementary schools. Because look at where the school is, they're not going to go any farther. Yet it would provide services because right on the K eights, those sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, it's very few. What is the possibility of doing that?
Correct, and that was something that was actually in the study for, for V L K. They actually looked at the possibility of Hambrick becoming a middle school. And would you mind speaking to that?
Okay, so we did look at Hambrick, but the parts of the middle school that it's missing are the, the most expensive pieces, the additional science labs, the locker rooms, athletic facilities. So when you build a campus, that's, that's probably the most expensive part of it. So you're, you're paying a premium to build small portions of those expensive items. And it, it just, what we were looking at, it dislodged the need from, you solved the middle school problem, but losing the elementary kid capacity just created an elementary student problem.
Hambrick would, we have the issue with the interlocal agreement with the city of El Paso, and we don't own all that land, and some of our facilities are in interlocal agreement. So Hambrick would not fit that middle school concept, you know? Uh, we're not, we're not.
Well, how about the other way around? Like then, should we stack Cybert on top of Mountwood Middle? Okay, never mind.
No, 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 that, I, I didn't follow that because Cybert is K through eight, so.
My, my thought was, Mr. Nakada, is that make Hambrick sixth, seventh, and eighth, make Cybert K through five.
So why not flip it?
Well, that's, well, we can, I mean, the only issue is, you know, it's just a stone's throw from Mountwood Middle to Cybert. I'm not sure, on the other hand, Cybert could handle all of the northern part and Mountwood all the southern part, and that would still work. And again, Hambrick would just be an elementary school. And, and they're all there. And maybe that would provide services. Can, can we do that at Cybert, Mr. Hynton?
We would have to add the facility like Clinton said, you know, to upgrade the athletics and the science labs.
Ms. Macias.
That's still cheaper to school.
Mr. Hynton, but how, so how is it that we house sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students right now, and yet we'd still have to add stuff? Are we not providing those same things to those students right now?
No, we're providing them, but we're only providing them for about four hundred students. If you converted into a full-fledged middle school, you'd be looking at twelve hundred students, eleven hundred, twelve hundred student, which would mean more locker rooms, more science labs, and the additional facility. We have the labs there, but if we wouldn't convert it, we wouldn't have enough that is currently there that existent to handle the increased population.
Ms. Macias.
Yes, and believe it or not, we did look at that. In doing that, then it brings in the different component, which is the middle school part. Because where the middle school lies is where the feeder pattern is for those eighth graders because of U I L. Then those students, if they're not within that feeder pattern, it causes issues for U I L. So right now, in pairing up Hambrick and Cybert, we do not have enough room in Montwood once they go, um, once they get to the high school. And if we were to pair them up just in that same location, it would help El Dorado, but then it would be, um, it would help El Dorado. So if we were to do that, it would, my recommendation would still be possibly that they would feed into El Dorado. However, and we could look at the, the numbers for that. Now, before, the way that we accommodated was whenever we're looking at Hambrick going to a middle school, was we were actually shifting some of the elementary into the, to the Montwood feeder pattern schools to help them to make sure we, again, utilize the facilities to the best of its extent. But we'll continue to look at that. But those were the things that came up whenever we looked at that possibility before.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Ms. Macias, in looking at, you were saying we needed to help out El Dorado. Right now, that's one of our most populated areas. And instead of pulling from, and I'm just going to say, Montwood side to El Dorado, and in other words, instead of moving Cybert into the El Dorado area, and could we not go from the other side this way and leave, again, like Mr. Ayub was saying, the Montwood area is a more established area. I mean, if, even in, in my neighborhood, I'm not seeing that many young children anymore. People are moving out and, and there's a lot of houses up for sale in that area. The, on the east side of the loop, seems like where the majority of the growth is going. We all know that. So why would we not leave this area back to, again, going to Montwood versus sending them to El Dorado and then trying to alleviate from this way, that way, and then later, we may have to look at it this way? Leave that in this area and then pull some of the students from the Pebble Hills area into the El Dorado area?
And, and we did. Whenever we're looking at it, Montwood, El Dorado, and Pebble Hills, they are, are on the same campus. So what we did is, you're exactly right, Chester Jordan, currently, it resides on both sides of Saragossa. So one of the recommendations coming up for the El Dorado feeder pattern is for the middle school, they're at Chester Jordan. All of the students that are west of Saragossa would now reside in the El Dorado feeder pattern and continue to be in El Dorado. And then the students that are east of Saragossa, they would stay within the Pebble Hills feeder pattern.
I have a question, and, and, and I'm glad you brought this part up right here. Chester Jordan, are we using, we're using Chester Jordan as an overflow school, right? Correct? Okay, so if we were to look, and, and again, in looking just, I know we've always looked at natural boundaries and, and what we need to do, what is the Chester Jordan boundaries right now as it stands?
The area in yellow.
Okay. And, okay, and that area as well? Okay.
The red outline, which is the yellow in that.
Okay. Where is the new growth going in that area? Do we know, the new housing developments?
Yes.
This, this, this is how it's just, it's out in the middle.
There's, there's some, there's still some in that area, a small amount.
By relieving Pebble Hills, you know, we, we're making this kind of a shift because there, there will be less growth. It's really concentrating in, in, in this Pebble Hills area. So we're trying to relieve Peb, Peb, Pebble Hills so it can handle the growth. And I think that's why that, that move with the Cybert move up is, is going to help Montwood. Really, it could almost be a, it could almost finish Montwood. We might not have to, to change Montwood very much anymore because of some, some of that move that we're doing there.
So with, on this, go back to, that's the current one, but what we're proposing.
For El, El Dorado?
Yes, back up one.
To, you don't, you don't go back to Mont, okay.
This is what we're. This is what we're, so this is El Dorado, so if you look at it, El Dorado basically would be now landlocked, would be locked in, correct? The only growth for El Dorado now, which next year we anticipate being the, from what I understand, the biggest graduation class in the history of not only Socorro, but I think El Paso, over a thousand students. In this area, the only growth would be in the, the Purple Heart area, correct? That's the only.
This is finishing out here and there's some apartment, you'll probably have some apartments along here eventually.
And that's it, and that's, El Dorado will be set.
More than likely, yes.
Well, why couldn't, um, all of Chester Jordan be El Dorados?
In this case, it would be El Dorado.
No, it wouldn't, cause there's this whole tail there.
No, but that.
We didn't move all of Chester Jordan.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
At the element, at the middle school level, we, we only made the change at Jordan at the middle school. So we, we've, 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 in, in effect, split that elementary to where this, this side of it would go to Purple Heart and this side of it would stay in Fuentes and go down to Pebble Hills.
In, in my mind, they're not a big rush for Pebble Hills to grow, it's gonna grow no matter what, it's coming up fast. But if we need to make sure that we've established an attendance, uh, number for El Dorado, then why couldn't they have all of Chester Jordan?
Instead of moving Cyber?
Maybe instead of moving Cyber, and, and it's one, it's instead of across the freeway, it's just across, uh, Saragossa here.
I just worry if we don't move Cyber, then we can't relieve, I don't know that we can relieve, uh, Montwood. Mo, I mean, relieve Pebble Hills.
Relieve the, the support for the middle school in the, in the El Dorado feeder pattern. So by having built Cyber and Hambrick, they actually help with Hernando for the middle school.
Well, but we could still do that and let just Chester Jordan be all of El Dorado. One thing doesn't impact the other.
So I'm gonna go back to, so this was Mont, I guess we, we kind of, this was the Montwood High School. This is the number of high school students that would be moved and the number that would be, this is where we're saying this Sun Ridge, relieving Sun Ridge i- is the, is a big reason for moving Cyber. Because when, you, you're getting a net, a net sum of about the same, but you're, you're establishing Montwood's, I think, feeder pattern there. Pretty, it'll be pretty much established if, if we, if we move that up.
And Mr. Gardner, and, or Ms. Macias, and if you leave those four ninety-eight there in Mountwood, that would leave Mountwood at where it is today, twenty-four hundred, twenty-five hundred students. Provided we give Chester Jordan to El Dorado. I know it's a lot of numbers, I realize that.
Yes, I, I think what I'll do is, I'll make sure to share with you the, the dominoes. Cause truly with that four ninety-eight, what it does is it helps us with the area in El Dorado for middle school students. So therefore, for example, you all sharing for Jordan, and I'm gonna look at the numbers. The one thing that I'm concerned of is that we accounted for that area, which is west of Jordan going to Hernando, which we have room for. The other area, which is at Fuentes, there is no room in the El Dorado feeder pattern middle school. So, so those are the, the moving pieces. And the reason I'm sharing that with you is that way you give me feedback and that way you could see that piece of, of what I'm looking at.
And maybe I'm, I'm not understanding a rule or a law here that, why couldn't we still move those middle stu- school students over in order to relieve the middle school situation? And then the high school situation's a different one, or is there a law or a rule that doesn't allow that?
Well, it's U I L. In eighth grade, they actually establish their residency as far as the feeder or the school that they go to for high school in eighth grade. That's how they establish that piece of it. What I'll do is let me contact U I L to see if we put it in writing somewhere and that way it's already established. If not, all those students would have to do P A P Fs and possibly be three sixty-five their freshman year because they're not residing or they're not going to the middle school that feeds into their high school. We're very, very careful that every single middle school feeds right into the high school, those eighth graders. Cause that's where they gain their eligibility in eighth grade now, not in ninth.
So, I'm sorry.
I'd be interested to hear the, the response on that.
And I don't follow that because if we say that this school's eighth grader goes to this high school, how is that not in the feeder pattern?
Um, I think the question was if we keep Bill Cyber where it was, we have that area of Hambrick that, that was gonna, that Cyber was gonna help with. And El Dorado, and that way Hambrick would be able to help with that area for Hernando for the middle school that gives us now capacity to bring the Jordan students for middle school. The one thing that we could do is that we would now have that area zone to, to Montwood. And that would be part of the proposal. And that way, it would not be going to El Dorado, which is that little corner area that we had.
Okay, and then.
And that's something that all the numbers that I'll look at.
And then Cyber and Hambrick are both K through eight, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm back to being confused and then we don't have to
No.
Talk about it right now, but.
I'm glad you're saying it, cause I feel the same way.
I, I just don't, you know, we keep understand, or, or talking about relieving Hernando.
Correct.
But I don't understand how that change would relieve Hernando any more than it already does because the fifth graders become sixth graders at those schools. You know, we can, we can add to them, but, um, I don't, I don't understand how, how they burden Hernando, I guess, or how they contribute to a burden in Hernando right now when they carry their, their same students the whole time.
Yes, and let me clarify, this area here, which currently goes to Hernando, this area here, we are recommending to go to Hambrick. So that's where the relief would occur, and these are middle school students.
Okay, so they would go from Hernando to, to Hambrick?
Correct.
I got that. But then we're putting them right back to El Dorado?
Correct, which supports El Dorado as far as moving forward with their numbers currently.
Okay. But haven't we seen then decreasing enrollment at Montwood over the last several years?
And, and, yes, please, and we're bringing students.
We're bringing students into Montwood from the Sun Ridge area. So that, that's how we're trying, we're, we're trying to move that area into, into Montwood right now. So we're, we're, we're bringing students from Cyber. Keep in mind, this was the Cyber. So we've moved these a hundred and eight, a hundred and eighty-five students here and seventy-six students here in Montwood. So we're trying to solidify that Montwood zone. And Cyber and their middle school students relieves Hambrick. And then when, when we get to El Dorado, we, we got the, you might see it better when you have like, I've, I've got the point. So we get that, the middle here, then you see where we're, we're able then to relieve Hernando by moving in, by, by moving these students into Hambrick.
Okay, and then, um, what is the, um, enrollment cutoff for six A?
Well, it changes every year of alignment, it changes what they do is they pretty much stack this up, they count and then they draw the line. It's been about twenty-one hundred more students, most of it in the past five, or ten, five or ten.
Mr. Gardner? Did you go back to the map, Mr. Gardner?
You sure, which, which one?
The, the one just before this, I believe.
The Montwood one? Or, or the Montwood or the El Dorado?
The, uh, the El Dorado.
Elementary or middle?
No, there's that one, yes. Back to my point, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I understand where you're trying to provide relief and we wanna keep, you know, kind of a, a linear progression here from eighth grade on into high school. But if what you're saying is that Hambrick would be helping, uh, uh, Er, no, Hernando, right? By taking the, those plus two hundred and ten students and, and moving them over and, and helping them with that. But really, Hambrick is only gonna lose a hundred and two to Cyber. So at the end of the day, we're really talking about a difference of a hundred and two students, which we probably will make up if we let, uh, my El Dor, uh, El Dorado pick up all of Jordan. Would you give some thought to that? I mean, and in that way, there is no, um, I guess, anybody being upset about us not having a linear progression on the K through high school.
Uh, if we could go back to the, uh, Montwood area and specifically the Helen Ball. I understand Helen Ball and Benito Martinez are the overflow schools right now. Yes. Now, the numbers that you are projecting here and the numbers we actually have now, is it one in the same?
Uh, no, many of those numbers improved.
About Helen Ball?
Uh, yes. And Helen Ball, for Helen Ball, what occurred is they received this, I think you showed them now. For Helen Ball, currently where you have that two oh two number, all of those students there go to Helen Ball. So therefore, if you notice the three twenty-four number here, what we're doing is we are replacing those students here, which is by the Montwood area as far as, um, the road. And these students up here will be going to El Villa Chavez. So you're exactly right, we are balancing so that we could relieve or help relieve Pebble Hills. In that way, they are in the.
I think if I can help, I think the first of what, are you, are the number here voting, is that with or without the overflows?
Oh.
Without.
Correct.
Without.
Correct, so technically, whenever we do or we recommend this, the idea is to get away from the overflow as much as we can. Because truly, these are where the students live or they reside. When we do the boundary change, they should be attending the, the area or the school within their attendance zone. So that is our, our biggest goal, that, that we move away from the overflow.
And the overflow is coming from all over the district or specific area?
The majority of the overflow comes from the Pebble Hills area currently. And the El Dorado area is the one that helps us with it, including Helen Ball. Helen Ball helps us with that overflow from the Pebble Hills area, which is Luhan Chavez.
I think we've, we bounced around a little bit. So thi- this was the result of, of those Montwood moves. You can see that, 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 um, Cyber is no longer in the Montwood feeder from this number. Slider Middle School, it, it, when compared to, to the above, gets, gets a little bit over functional capacity. But again, in, in this Montwood feeder, that's kind of a good thing because that is, is a feeder that's established. And those numbers, they're, although they're getting a little bit over functional capacity, it's probably gonna be all right as regeneration occurs. So this is the result of that. If I go forward now to El, El, El Dorado, now, I realize we've talked already about this a little bit, but the moves in El, El Dorado, um, are moving, you know, the students out of Hambrick, I mean, out of Hambrick into Cyber. And I think that's the only move at the elementary level in El Dorado. El, El Dorado's biggest help then is where we talk about bringing Cyber in, improving, you know, um, Hernando with Hambrick and then this, this, uh, Saragossa side of Jordan. At least, this, this is the plan that we're showing now. And, and again, at the high school, it looks like this, it's this, so the high school boundary changes on this side and on this side. And the results of that, you, you can see here, what this does is the El, El, El Dorado, it gets El, El Dorado's high school numbers up because while they've, you know, as they've lost their students to, to Pebble Hills, you've got a very similar, uh, pattern here that, you know, this hasn't changed, you know, the, 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 uh, just the schools all, you know, that part works about the same. Cyber is all below functional capacity, or at functional capacity, so that stays pretty steady. And, and that moved with Cyber, the relie- relieving Cyber with Martinez and moving in the Hambrick section, that area is built out too. So al- although the Cyber numbers are above functional capacity, they, they are below the maximum capacity and, and they should stay there. Again, it's an, it's a, the move that the administration has recommended, that I ran numbers on, it seemed to really improve, hopefully offers an opportunity to establish what we can, as best we can in a fast-growth school district. You know, most fast-growth school districts, we say that you're probably gonna have a boundary adjustment every two, two to three years. It's just part of the, the nature of the beast. But where we can, we're now kind of getting, getting areas that are gradually now can become established. The Montwood area, some of the Cyber, Cyber area. And then this, this final, uh, Peb, Pebble Hills, again, this is where we're doing the, the relief to Pebble Hills. The ar- the, the area that we're moving into Ball, moving Ball entirely out of this feeder pattern, which you can see from here, then, um, the middle school, Sun Ridge is relieved. It no longer goes down here or out here. And, and you can see up here that, uh, Fuentes is relieved as well in this, in this version. And the high school, the Pebble Hills high school would look like this. Again, this is the Pebble Hills zone and this is where your, most of your students, your, your most dense and the most movement is currently occurring, you know, where you have, you know, your overflow happening. And where you're still gonna need, we're still gonna need, I mean, we, you know, we could open a school tomorrow in that Pebble Hills zone. You know, and we talk about geography too, and that's gonna be a very important part of, of the site of these next cou- these next couple of schools. But this next campus could open tomorrow and there's enough students there to, to fill it, you know, at, at this point. Yeah, the challenges remain at elementary. And, okay, there, there were no recommended changes in, in the Socorro feeder. So I guess.
Well, we're perfect at Socorro, so, you know, we're great, so.
Now that you're no longer there.
That one hurt.
I guess I don't get to ask a question now. Ms. Macias, this precedes your time, so I don't expect you to know because it, I don't know either. But, um, the last time we did boundary changes, did we do a similar study or, or, or did we do that ourselves?
Um, we've proposed boundary changes twice since I've been here and they've been, they've been small. And we do have somebody that has preceded me and has, has been a great, um, asset is Mr. Juan Heimit. So as you had shared, you know, did, was there a prior demographic study? Yes, and he shared that with me. So we've been looking at that information along with the information that Templeton, Templeton demographics has shared. So I don't know if that helps.
So both times, as, as small as the bounty changes, changes were, I remember that they, I don't think they were as drastic as this, but, you know, either we, we had new, um, you know, campuses being, so I wouldn't expect it either. But, um, we had similar studies? Both times?
Correct.
Do you remember who did them for us?
He did.
Just.
No, we did them in-house, right?
We did them in-house.
We did them in-house, but we based it on, you had asked a question earlier, had we done a demographic study? We did one in oh five, oh six. And the studies that we used and did in-house, we used some of that information.
Okay, yeah, that's, cause I didn't remember.
Not in this depth, but.
Right, but the one in oh five, oh six was in, in this depth?
Yes, sir.
And it was done by a firm?
School, district, strategies or something, some.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Heimit.
Just to close, um, I, I wanna again just mention that, you know, working with Juan and the data that Juan provides has been awesome. He, he really is a, you know, you, you wanna hold on to Juan. We, we are gonna get, Juan and I are gonna work together in, in the middle of September when things kind of settle down, if all goes well, and relook at these with brand-new geocode. We'll be relooking at the yields and the trends. We'll, we'll, we'll understand if the housing, the market stayed, you know, if it stayed consistent with, with where we thought it would. And then we can relook at these exact same boundaries or adjustments that we might make between now and then to tweak or to, to look at some of your suggestions. So we look forward to kind of doing that as school gets started with. And, and the benefit of that, we won't be skipping, it'll be, cause we're looking at the possible, you know, impact of these in twenty seventeen. So we'll be using sixteen, seventeen data, you know, looking at what next year could look like. It'll be, 'cause we're looking at the possible, you know, impact of these in twenty seventeen, so we'll be using sixteen, seventeen data, you know, looking at what next year could look like.
Any more questions?
Um, yes, what, can you go back to that Pebble Hills feeder numbers? You said, and you said something interesting. So, you, I'm looking at Butler for seventeen eighteen and Lujan Chavez fourteen, which is fourteen fifty-one for Butler and sixteen thirty-nine for Lujan, which equals to a total of about three thousand something students. So, what, Mr. Gardner, Ms. Macias, what you're saying is basically in that area, you needed a new school, like, last two, last year?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Okay.
Mr. Nakira.
Nakira.
What, uh, will you remind me, sir, what, what the colors represent?
Sure.
Yellow is approaching.
I should, I should have started with that. The yellow means it exceeds that functional capacity number that you see on there.
Okay.
This, it exceeds this row, and when it turns red, it, it exceeds the maximum capacity. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No, thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Okay, let's go to item B, update on disposal of designated district.
Surplus technology items, Mr. Inte.
Yes, President Gondola, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. At this time, administration, administration would like to pull this item. We have been researching it, and a couple of the individuals that, uh, are no longer with the district, we have not been able to make contact along with the additional, get some in, information from the firm. So, administration is recommending to pull this item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Inte. Then let's go on to item four, executive session. This meeting is to be closed per consideration of extending Joy Searowsky's resignation due date of October thirty fir, I mean, of August thirty-first, two thousand sixteen to December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, for discussion regarding the recommendation and administrative, uh, administration, recommend, recommendation of administration to propose termination of term contract of RH from Paso del Norte School for Good Cause to Discuss Real Estate Matters and to consider administrative recommendations for Director of Bilingual ESL Education, Principal at Salvador H. Sanchez Middle School, Assistant Principals at Mission Early College High School and Paso del Norte School, Coordinator of Advanced Academics and Licensed Specialist in School Psychology under Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven one, five five one point zero seven two, and five five one point zero seven four. The time is seven thirty-nine.
Sorry.
We're back out of executive session, it is eight forty-nine. Uh, new business, consider approval of existing, uh, extending Joy Searowsky's resignation date from August, this, August thirty-first, two thousand sixteen to December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. Mr. Campoya.
Good evening, President Gondola, Dr. Espinoza, board members. This evening, I'm requesting, um, your support in extending Joy Searowsky, Director of Human Resources for, uh, Elementary Staffing, her resignation date for her retirement from August thirty-first to December thirty-first. Reason being is that in cabinet, we had approved to replace her back in April, and her retirement date was August thirty-first. So, I was given an opportunity to have her, um, train a new individual for at least four months. Unfortunately, that did not pan out, and the replacement, or her replacement, was not approved until July, or started in two July, approved in the June board meeting. So, it only gives me two months for Ms. Searowsky to work with her. Uh, Ms. Searowsky does hold a critical position, and, uh, right now, we have her working with Administrative Services with, uh, Ms. Macias Department on the overflows for the campuses that have overflow students. And unfortunately, Lupe Lujan, which works with closely with Ms. Ms. Searowsky, is not here due to being on a leave of absence. So, that kind of puts us in a bind. I also have two new directors in HR, Dr. Serano working in secondary, and then Selena Staus working in support personnel. So, so it's a unique situation where I do need that, uh, additional support. So, I'm here tonight to ask you all for your support to extend her retirement date all the way to December.
I have a motion made by Mr. Guerra, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Our mics, please.
Is Ms. Searowsky on board with us, I guess is the important question?
Yes, I made sure that.
Just making sure.
Yes, ma'am, she is.
Okay.
Okay, motion is made. All is in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
And I abstain, Ms. Searowsky is my president.
Really? Yeah.
Thank you.
God, I feel sorry for her. Uh, item B, uh, discussion, uh, decision and possible action regarding the recommendation of administration to propose termination of term contract for RH for Paso del Norte School for Good Cause. Mr. Campoya.
Yes, President Gondola, Dr. Espinoza, board members. Administration is, uh, recommending to pull this item at this time, and it will be presented to you all on Tuesday, the next regular board meeting.
Thank you. Let's go to item C, consider approval of administrative recommendations, number one, Director of Bilingual ESL Education.
Yes, President Gondola, members of the board, at this time, administration is pulling this item from the agenda.
Let's go to item number two, Principal at Salvador H. Sanchez Middle School.
Yes, President Gondola, members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Ms. Rosie Vega Barrio to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as the Principal at Salvador Sanchez Middle School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Nakira, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, Assistant Principals of Mission Early College High School.
Yes, President Gondola, members of the board, at this time, administration is pulling this item from the agenda.
Let's go to item B, Paso del Norte School.
Yes, Paso de, yes, Paso del Norte. Uh, President Gondola, members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Deanna White to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as Assistant Principal of Paso del Norte.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Nakira, seconded by Mrs. Nakira. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, Coordinator of Advanced Academics.
Yes, President Gondola, members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Ms. Lourdes Coria to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as Coordinator of Advanced Academics.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Ayub, seconded by Mr. Nakira. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, Licensed Specialist in School Psychology.
Yes, President Gondola, members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Ms. Karina Muñoz to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as Licensed Specialist in School Psychology.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Ayub, seconded by Mr. Nakira. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There being no further items, this meeting is now adjourned at eight fifty-four.